It is four o'clock and the Curville City Council Workshop is in session. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, let's move to information discussion and possible action. Beginning with Development Services Neighborhood Enhancement Updates.
Oh, good. Well, good afternoon or good evening as we're going into the evening. I hope everybody's doing well. So I'm gonna take a little bit more of just kind of talking in broad generals of Development Services. And then also talk a little bit about what we're gonna do for the net program as well. But I just want to give you some updates. This is kind of the agenda I'm gonna follow. Staff updates, some MGO upgrades and code enforcement. That's mainly the net program and some, just give you some overall results of the department. So you can kind of see how we're performing as a whole. One of the things that we have done is we changed where Darryl Poe reported to. Before, he actually reported to Trina Sanchez. And so we felt it was better to realign that so that we could have code enforcement, health and code all in one under one. And since Donna is a manager and for a long time she was manager of one. So we gave her an individual so she could oversee and have support as well. So Darryl now reports to Donna and dotted line between Donna and Trina as well. So that's the biggest change that we did organizationally. And I think that's gonna help us more for redundancy. Because one of the things that we ran across when Darryl was out, we didn't have that redundancy of covering for him. And so although we had some certifications, just the experience of doing it. And so I wanted to have someone to be more direct that's gonna be working in this field. So Donna's in the process of getting her health enforcement certifications. As well as he's gonna work towards getting his code enforcement certifications as well. So we'll be double covered there. So just a little bit.
Does that mean that Donna will be doing inspections?
Ideally, she will be doing it more as a backup role when she has to. And same thing for Darryl when he has to to do those code enforcement inspections. But the idea is to keep them in their roles is just for backup purposes.
We just, we run such a lean staff. Going through the pandemic was a great example of, you know, when a staff member may be out for a long period of time and they may be the only one, we need to emphasize cross-training and make sure we can still take care of business.
Okay.
So some MGO updates. So I'm excited about this. We're getting ready to roll out what's called MGO Connect. This is my government online's. They're trying to, of course, improve their system. And so one of the things they're trying to do is their mobile update or their mobile app is to make it a little bit more customer-friendly. They're trying to go away from the customer portal. So right now you have to log on to your computer. Now you can be all web-based, I'm sorry, app-based. So you'll be able to utilize it on your phone and be a little bit more customer-friendly. And they, they're talking about actually allowing us to do some customizable branding for us. So that we can put our city logo and put some additional things on there. And then gives the customer a little bit more control of what they're seeing on their portal. And so this kind of gives you a picture. I know it's not the best picture, but it kind of gives you an idea of what their MGO Connect's gonna start to look like as we go forward. One of the benefits for us as well is it helps consolidate the app for staff. Because right now there's multiple layers that we have to go through. We have the building side and then you have the inspection side and then you have the asset side. So there's a lot of moving pieces and trying to just consolidate it to one so that you're not going to all these different places. And then they're trying to utilize more of the Facebook-style navigation. So everybody's familiar with Facebook and so you get to utilize that a little bit better. And then enhance communication. So there's one of the things that I really like is that instead of what we do now is if we have email communication with our customers, we have to download that email communication, we then upload it to MGO just to document it. Now, all that communication hack can happen in MGO itself. So all the emailing, think of it more like an instant minister kind of deal. So you have that. And then allows for better report building. And then route optimization, that's one of the cool things about that that we have not utilized. Is that now an inspector can say, okay, I have ten inspections. What is the best route to go to all my ten inspections? So it'll route it for them until then they just have to follow the route as they go through the day. So that's one of the things. And I just talked about the two-way communication with the customers as well.
Let me ask, what, what is the, what's been the response of builders, contractors, so forth to what we already have?
Well, we haven't rolled out the new MGO Connect.
I know, I know, but, but what we exist, what exists now?
Can I, oh, can I answer that?
Okay.
Because I have to use this in my business. And I always tease Trina because to me it is the most un-customer-friendly program out there. And so anything that you can do to make it more user-friendly, I'm in favor for.
Yeah. And, and what we found is, is individuals that are in it every day, like construction, construction, to them it's very easy because it's just comes second nature. But if you're in it once a year, then it can be a little cumbersome.
Yeah, and the same with the, 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 the one specific thing that I know that was brought to, to my attention by a builder and then also when we were going through the permitting process with our contractor was how the plant, how the, the permit submitted in that, that email back that's in acceptance versus not really being in acceptance. It's like, we're accepting that you've turned in your application and then the contractor may think that they can go forward, but they really haven't been issued their permits. And, and so maybe.
So that, that hasn't quite been addressed yet by MGO. But, you know, what we're trying to do is just fix some of the language in working with them so that it makes a little bit more sense.
So that it's like, this is just approval of you submitting, not, 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 yeah, just the application.
It's more acknowledged receipt.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is one of the reasons why, like, I know Drew's here with, about plating. It's one of the reasons why we're not gonna put MGO or plating in MGO just yet until they get that fixed.
Okay.
Because of the whole, well, is the apple plat, uh, accepted?
Yeah.
Yeah, the language, right? Yeah.
So we're gonna avoid that for now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's good.
We are excited about the new app because most of our contractors are, it's a mobile office, right? And they're out there in the field. And so we think that's gonna be a big customer service enhancement for them to be able to do that. Rather than having to tap into a website and kind of log in, all those other pieces would just be more app-based, so.
So I can't give you a quite timeline as to when we're gonna implement it. And that's because we're gonna take this time to go back and revisit all our requirements. You know, because one of the things that we heard from our customers is that, well, sometimes these requirements fit perfectly, but other times the requirements based on what I'm doing do not fit. And so there's a lot of calling back and forth. And so this gives us an opportunity just to go back and revisit all the requirements, set them up properly. So that way, the customer sees it much easier to, to utilize. So we're hoping to start that here soon. And then by the summer, I'm hoping that we can start the implementation process. So let's talk a little bit about the net program. So one of the things I kind of want to recap, what is the net program? So it's the Neighborhood Enhancement Program. Where we're trying to go to different areas of, or different neighborhoods within the city of Curville to try to figure out ways of how we can help improve the, the community itself. And so the last community, the last area that we focused on was the Doyle Community Area. And some of the things that we were able to accomplish was, if you recall, on the, the city yard, we put that fence back there in the back so that it kind of separated the city yard from the community itself. We installed some Doyle District Street Light, uh, street signs, I'm sorry. We cleaned up some alleyways, we trimmed some trees, we repaired some stairs that have individual homes, removed a lot of bulk items and we demolished two homes with volunteer compliance on that. And then of course.
On, on that, that was the request of the property owner?
Yes. Yes, that, and we worked with them in conjunction to get that, to make that happen.
They were substandard structures. They really weren't homes at this point anymore.
Yeah, they were abandoned.
They weren't home, abandoned.
Were you able to utilize any volunteers from the neighborhood or was it city staff that did?
It was a little bit of combination, more city staff than anything else. But we tried to get as many people to come out and help as possible. But like the, the, the actual repair of those stairs, that was a volunteer that went out and did that and did some other little things around the neighborhood.
Okay.
So.
But all of, excuse me?
I was just gonna say, as we shift the program forward and we look to continue to implement, this was the first one out of the chute. We're really looking to be that facilitator for outside volunteer groups to be doing that work, not for really in-city staff members. So city staff is gonna be primarily in a facilitation role.
Awesome.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was gonna talk about in my next slide. Because one of the areas, the area that we want to focus on, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, my question just was to clarify, all of those things were done, no cost to any of the homeowners?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not, it was not, it was cost, it was incurred. And I was looking back at some numbers. We, we pretty much invested close to twenty thousand dollars in that area through the net program itself. The vast majority of that cost was just the demos. That's what costs a lot of money. So the next area of opportunity that we've identified was the Legion area. So that is an opportunity for us. And so some of our biggest goals, as, as Mr. Hoppy was communicating, is to kind of change the way we're approaching things and try to be more of a facilitator of trying to get homeowners to, to, to work with volunteers, to work with churches or other communities so that they can repair certain things on their homes. However, we do want to go in and identify some street repair opportunities and work in conjunction with Public Works, identify any tree overhangs, because we drove, me and Donna kind of did a preliminary drive-through and there's a lot of areas that could have some tree trimming done and mainly on, on the right-of-way. Identify some nuisance violations and that's basically going in saying, hey, you, you've got some bulky items. And so what we're gonna do there is give an opportunity for individuals to remove some of those bulky items. So what we're gonna do is get a, a container, place it out on a specific location and then have, in this case Donna is gonna sit out and make sure that what's being dumped into the container are bulky, true bulky items. We're trying to avoid some of the non-items that, that could be hazardous. And try to do that over the course of two weekends. So we'll have the container placed out on site at, from X-specific hours, remove the container, take it to the, to the landfill and then come back the next weekend and have it there available for them as well. And then, of course, just identify any other additional areas of opportunity in that specific neighborhood. So we're gonna be working with, of course, our departments, Public Works, Parks, to see if there's opportunities that we can do as well.
What falls under the guise of nuisance?
So like you could have vehicles, you could have high grass and weeds. Because by this time, we're looking at April, May-ish timeframe, we should start seeing some grass come out and some other items that may be, you know, trash and rubbish on the property that, that this is a great opportunity for them to get rid of.
Yeah. Oh, and, oh, my, I have a question because when, when the Doyle was a great kickoff because there was a community plan and there were meetings and there's a location for those meetings, like a community central area. So what does this look like in a different neighborhood that doesn't have that, those same opportunities as far as meeting as a group, as far as coming together to provide input and to just have an opportunity to get, to get the word out to the neighborhood?
Yeah. So what we're gonna do is staff from Development Services is gonna go out and basically pound the streets, knock on doors and let them know what's going on and what's happening in that area. And then Donna is trying to reach out to a couple of churches in that area to try to kind of be that community center so we can visit and meet. And, and also that's a place where we can have that, that, that bin as we were talking about earlier.
Remember too, this, this is distinct from.
Right, it's not a neighborhood plan.
Right, it's not the neighborhood area plan. That, that may be something that we want to continue and we, we talk about this summer.
No, I understand. I just, it was a nice, it was a easy, it was an easy transition from the neighborhood plan to the net and then, you know, so now we're going in a different, we're starting, we have a different starting place in a different area, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you're right, this, this one doesn't have as central of a location like we had.
Yeah.
It was a great benefit there, so.
The, if Mr. Matthews writes a story that includes this, what are the key things we need to say to the citizens at this point?
I would say that the biggest thing is that we're going in to try to help facilitate some improvements to the neighborhood itself and try to help them to remove some of the, the bulky items that they've had for years and try to facilitate a cleanup. And that's the biggest thing, is try to facilitate a major cleanup in the area.
I was gonna say, when I was at Partners in Ministry, we did cleanup in this area. We did stairs for wheelchairs and that kind of thing. And found a lot of volunteers that were willing to help. But, but it's also that matter of involving the citizens. One thing I'm just saying, we need to put on the list is the ACOG Weatherization Program. And they allowed you to do some, some additional things there with some funding, so.
Okay. We'll definitely take a look at all those things. And Donna's still trying to work the plan and still build it out, so we can go out there and work it.
Any particular reason that you didn't go all the way to Meadowview with this?
Um, we're trying to be compact at the same time. We didn't want to go overreach.
Okay.
And so we want to just keep it to area that she has seen a lot of opportunity. Because the, how we picked this area was looking at her code enforcement records and trying to see, okay, where does she have the majority of the cases in, in a particular area? And so that's kind of how we came to that area.
Okay. Thank you.
So some of the results, this is a little small, so I, I kind of had to bring it up on my, my iPad to kind of read it to you. But this, remember this dashboard is just a high-level view of what Development Services are doing. These numbers here that you see are only through January, the end of January. But you can kind of see our revenues so far is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars with our expenses two ninety-seven. You kind of see that over the year, just kind of build out, wash out. We're hopeful that we have several projects that are gonna come in during the next few months that are high-dollar value projects that give us a little bit more revenue. Speaking to Trina, she said that we received a permit today for USDA. And that could be a project that could bring in some significant revenue for the department itself. And that was just one building and they're doing multiple buildings out there. So we, we're looking forward to that. Total permits, six hundred and ninety-seven permits. I'm not gonna go through each specific item. Code enforcement, they've done, or Donna has done two hundred and fifteen cases so far. And planning has processed about twenty-nine plats overall. And so you can just kind of get a general feel for how the department is performing overall. I wanted to, I wanted to break down the, 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 the permits themselves and the type of permits that we're getting here and just kind of give you an idea of where they're happening throughout the city. As you can see, the blue represents the residential permits and the red represents the commercial permits. And we did have one permit out there that was outside the city limits, but that was because we were installing a water yard line that needed inspection. And so we, we're, this kind of gives you a big, big picture of where projects are occurring in the city of Curville. And then one of the things I wanted to kind of highlight, the type of permits. You can see for a commercial, the, the number one leader is plumbing. Then you get into electrical permits and so forth, all the way down. And then on the residential side, you can see plumbing as well. Then you have electrical, then you have some mechanical and then all the way down through the other type of permits that are being seen. So one of the questions I know we do get a lot is about plan review. And so one of the things I wanted to highlight to you is that we are very much on track to maintain or be below our average plan review days. So we have, we have a standard and a goal that we try to maintain internally, five days, and then externally of ten days. So when you look at externally, you can see that we had some spikes in twenty twenty and we had a couple spikes in twenty twenty-one. But overall, you can pretty much see that we're averaging, when we get back to our customer, roughly about six, little over six days on average that we were, we're able to respond back to our customers with comments and plan review comments to them.
Explain external and internal.
So the external is the communication to the customer. When you come in, say, I have my application, you paid for your application, we go into plan review. And that plan review can sometimes encompass five departments where they're reviewing the plans and give you comments back. And sometimes those comments are giving back, on average, giving back to the customer within six days so that they get either, make changes to their plans or, you know, additional information is required or needed or they get an issuance of a permit. So that's what external is. And then the internal piece is just our internal review process. Because we want to make sure that we're being responsive. And so we communicate, and, and really it's Trina that is communicating with all the departments and making sure that, hey, have you done this, have you done that, and just following up with her. Because that's, this next slide, when you see it, our target is five days. We're right on average, as you can see, and especially since, basically, March of twenty-one, you can pretty much see we've been very consistent in our internal review of all our departments. And this is just an average of all of them.
So the way that works, if, we'll say there's five reviews that need to be taken care of, all of those reviews would go back to Trina and she communicates to the outside world?
Yes, or front staff in this case, but yes, through, through Trina's.
I'm not gonna ask you to name names, but do all the departments, are they pretty responsive?
Generally speaking, yes. Our, I would have to say that our, our department that is very quick to respond is the Fire and Marshals Office. They tend to be the fastest ones to do reviews.
And if they don't respond, they have to deal with Trina?
Yes.
Okay.
You can ask Kyle.
She runs a tight ship.
So would you say where this number starts to dip, like you said, back like in April twenty twenty-one, would you contribute that to process changes and, and, or just, just getting used to the process?
A little bit of process changes, but mostly just getting used to the system and, and, and the procedures and everything that we've implemented over the time.
Are any of these numbers affected by volume that you have that particular month?
They can be and it also depends on the complexity of the project itself. Especially if you have a project that is very big or has multiple reviews, those numbers can expand the project itself. For example, that one that's really high up there, on the five days, that was a project that had kind of been lingering out there, but it was on the customer side and come back. Because our clock stops when we send it back to the customer.
Okay.
But then when it came back, there was a lot of review. In this case, it was the Fire Marshal was doing a lot of in-depth review on that particular project. And I can't remember the project itself, but I know, I, I do remember he was doing a lot of fire, uh, fire-related work with them.
So, and I, this question may not make sense. So you've got ten days. If for some reason it doesn't get back to the customer in ten days, does the time start over again then for them?
No, we continue just monitoring it. Uh, but usually on their MGO website, they can actually see where it's, where, where the project is. And they can actually see what, who is it stuck with, the, the plan review.
Okay. Now, what, what do you do if you get a customer who says, I can't deal with this online? I can't, I can't do this on the computer, I.
So what we do is we have a kiosk in Development Services and we have them come into the office and we help them on their portal. Because the, the thing that we, we don't have access to is what they see on their portal side. And unfortunately, it's just the way MGO is set up. And so we kind of have to, you work with them on the kiosk to see what's happening on their side. Because, you know, we ask them to log in, we're not gonna ask them for their credentials uh, because, you know, we're just trying to avoid, you know, uh, security, cybersecurity issues. And so we, we stand up there with the, with them at the kiosk and walk them through.
I went with a customer, I went with someone that I know that was upset about the, about having to, to get a permit for some work he wanted to do on his own home. So I, I, he and I went and met with Trina and, and went through it together and he left as happy as could be, yeah, so.
How, what percentage of your, of the customers would use, would, would use the kiosk and come in as?
I would say probably at the beginning there was quite a bit, uh, but now lately, I would say that number is very small.
Good.
You might want to speak just anecdotally at least to the volume and reduction you've seen coming through the door since we moved to the system.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I, I can't speak to the actual numbers, but we have seen, I, I would, in talking to the, some of the staff, they're, they're probably thinking it's where we would probably have maybe twenty or thirty customers a day, we're probably only seeing maybe five customers on average that come in through the door that need help. Um, because the vast majority are, are using the, the system online. And so they never have to come into the office. And that's the thing is that I can upload my documents, I can upload my plans and never have to step foot into the office. Now, the only time we ask them is if it's a project that's over a million dollars, then for them to bring one set of, of, of plans into the office. But even those plans get uploaded and you can review, and all the staff members can review that way as well.
And each step in the process is also tracked. And so it's much harder to have user error, uh, human error that, that comes into play on that, on both sides of the equation, right? And as Guillermo mentioned earlier, the, the contractor or developer is able to see each step in the process as it's being, going through the review process. So it's a, there's a, you know, communication back to them so that they know that, you know, it's not just lost in cyberspace somewhere, it is progressing through.
And, and one of the benefits too of going to MGO Connect will be having a little bit more direct communication through the project itself versus outside emails or, you know, using our Outlook.
But that won't be, it won't be a learning curve really. It'll just happen for them that it's just easier and communicates better.
Yeah. And one of the things that, when customers do come in that have never used the system, we help them and then we also give them a work instruction of how to use the system itself.
Good, good.
That they can take with them. So any additional questions?
I just wanna say, I really appreciate the use of the term customer. I know that is throughout the city staff, just that sense of, these are our customers, we're gonna serve our customers and help them get their job done, so I like that.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Kyle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So on top of all of the projects that Guillermo mentioned, we've got a couple that we want to share with you on, on the CIP list. So I'm not gonna talk about the first handful. You're gonna see that with Stuart's presentation on the street stuff. Do you have some fancy little pictures here for you? First off, the five thirty-four Ellenberger well, you know, we had the ribbon cutting on that. Just kind of walk you through the sequence. This was the partnership with Headwaters, they went out and drilled this as a monitor well, found that it could be, you know, very productive. We got the building put up, you know, everything tied into the well and, you know, site paved, completed. And that is scheduled to be on production this coming week, so.
What well, what well is, what well did we switch over to? Um, I don't know if it was just lowest tank that switched over to well water or if it was the whole city that was clearing the lines out?
It was all of them.
It was all of them, the whole city?
Yeah, we shifted to groundwater wells for the week while we're doing plant maintenance.
Okay.
And the Ellenberger well is producing about how much, how many gallons per minute?
Seven hundred gallons a minute.
That well water tastes good, by the way.
I just build it, I, I don't. They, they maintain it and operate it.
Yeah, so, thumbs up.
Okay, one more thing on that. Slumber J helped in the drilling and so forth?
Yes, they were in the partnership with, with Headwaters. Uh, they, they had Slumber, uh, Slumber J come in and do the drilling itself. That they were not our contractor. Any other questions on that one? Uh, next one, stair replacement ramps, whatever we wanna call it, back behind the library. So thi- this was the old stairs that had been there for seemingly forever. Uh, the trees that you see in, in the middle of that picture, above the stairs are the ones that were wiped out in one of the windstorms that we had a couple, I guess, two years ago now. Damage to the, the structures, we decided to maintain the, the River Trail Access with, with handicap up to the library, have it as an actual trailhead. Uh, so this was just to kind of show you the sequence of, of events that we get to see on a daily basis, but, you know, citizens may not. This is just getting formwork ready for, for footings. This is, the footing's installed, getting formwork ready for the actual ramps. And, and then, you know, lastly, kind of where we're at right now is the actual ramps, the concrete installed on the ramps. What they're. What they're working on right now is the handrails for those, we should uh have a lot of that completed uh by the end of this week, hopefully next, there's some. Uh you know, fabrication that that's gonna have to be tweaked a little bit, but that's to kinda show you the sequence of of a simple project. Lower lower street, uh Lower Street drainage, uh Rabbi Take It Easy, so this is to. Uh it's it's kinda mind-boggling how uh congested this was compared to where we're at.
Where is, what what are we looking at right here?
So so what you're looking at here is just looking down the channel, this is actually looking towards Guadalupe, the first one was toward twenty seven. Uh you you see the big uh you know, hole on the on the right-hand side of the screen is, you know, that's under some houses that are near. Uh houses on Take It Easy.
That's a drainage?
Yes, that's the drainage ditch. Yes, ma'am. And and so this is, this is one of the big concerns that we've had for several years, as long as I've been here. Um and and why we, you know, this was priority number one on on our stormwater project list.
You dug out a deep chasm there.
You're you're skipping ahead, uh no, so uh partnership also, you know, you see the green line across, that was actually an act of gas main. Yes, so in partnership with with Atmos, we asked them to to move their their line, uh they were more than receptive of that. Uh so I wanted to, you know, show us some of the the issues that we had up and down this this channel. Uh we got that done before we even let the project, so uh now, a- as you've mentioned, uh it's cleared out and. Uh you can see, I mean, that that's a a full-sized dump truck there, that that's not anybody's little toy. Uh so it it is gonna be able to convey a significant amount of water and and hopefully. Uh and and then the, so the second phase of this is the upper Lower Street that, uh you know, we've got the. Kind of i- in conjunction with Text Dot, it's not our city project, they've got the twenty seven crossing, once they get that done, then we'll jump to the other side. But this is the the downstream that's gonna, you know, really have the the bigger impact, uh immediate impact.
Now, when it, when it leaves this, how is it going under Guadalupe? Is is what is there, will that be sufficient?
Yes, and except for the the, you know, really catastrophic, you know, as the floodplain terms, hundred-year storm, one percent chance. That's not gonna, I mean, that's just gonna go straight across. The inlet that's there right now is what all this is going to and and has a capacity for most of our our smaller storms until we get to the fifty and hundred year.
You may have seen that flume uh in the kinda lower part of Guadalupe Park, goes into the Guadalupe River. That uh starts basically at the end of here on the other side of Guadalupe Street and flows under the the park and the roadway.
Alright, we got some theatrics going here with the slideshow, so.
Let me say one thing about the the uh Lower Street project. That is a good example, and I've used it in several places, of the the cost of doing that kind of project. It's 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 necessary. But, boy, you're talking about significant costs.
That it's not a revenue generator, which is is hard to to do, but as you can see, the uh the impacts that it's gonna have on on the city are gonna be. Uh I mean, we've talked with Ms. Ickner with several citizens.
I have some happy campers knowing that it's going to happen.
So it's making my life a little bit easier, uh each step we get on them.
Well, I think it's important to note too, the complexity of those projects, right? You heard uh Atmos, right? Having to work with them, you work with Text Dot, so it's, these are other entities, it's not just a city project per se, right? So we're having to be the facilitator to help uh make these things happen for the community, uh working with these other organizations.
So just a quick update, uh this is one of the uh in in really kinda countywide, uh. Text Dot is moving to the the Mast Arms, uh so this is the uh sixteen and Water intersection right here. Um and then they've also done the Five Points intersection, uh you know, at Water and twenty seven. And just a quick update from from Text Dot, so the the. Twenty seven and Plaza, twenty seven and Woodlong, twenty seven and Five Points, and and then sixteen and Water intersections have all been completed. Couple little punchless items here and there, uh you know, minor landscaping things, that those are complete.
Can you remind me on the on that, not just on the arms, but what the technology there does, uh for example. On the intersection of Sydney Baker and Main Street. That signal light seems to sometimes do different things at different times.
Yes, so everything now with the upgraded boxes, uh not not just these upgrades, but also the synchronization update. They they are updating the boxes uh for hardware, and that will communicate back to the district office in San Antonio. So that they can alter the programming based on peak hour, based on.
They can tweak it all the time, whereas before. You would, if two ye- two years would go by, and then all of a sudden you go, oh, somebody reset this light. And it it, but now I, you can already, I've already noticed that different drive times or different, you know, whatever it may be, it looks like it's.
Yes, and previously was mainly complaint-driven. Uh yeah, they, I think about ten years ago, they had synced all the lights on sixteen, and it was complaint-driven, hey, we're waiting too long here, and so. So then it just got s- staggered, and we had a lot of traffic backing up. What they're trying to do is push that traffic through, uh on the major highways, get them, get them through town. Uh so that's where that that, you know, syncing up, all of these signals is gonna come into.
But and that can just happen almost in real time now, instead of. Going and reviewing and traffic counts.
Text Dot guarantee that they're through at this intersection out here at sixteen and Water?
So no, that that one, actually, they're still working on some puncher's items, they're they're close, uh it is functional.
Because on on Sydney Baker, headed towards Maine, there's still a huge backup. To where if you need to cross, cross uh Sydney Baker, say you're on Shriner. You can't cross because there's all that traffic that's still backed up in the middle of the road.
Right, and and that's, uh that came up yesterday in in uh the transportation planning meeting that we had. There was a lady that had mentioned something uh about this intersection. I have pinged the district office, saying, hey, we need to look at this. Um really, what what that amounts to is is the volumes are are very similar on twenty seven and sixteen. Um and it's it's really the the movements that uh a lot of the, I don't know if you're seeing the same thing, but what I see is the. The southbound, uh I I guess the the right turn lane as it would be. Most people gets both right turn and straight. It's not a dedicated right, where a lot of the movements are to the right, all it takes one person, and you've got ten rights that are gonna get backed up behind it. Yeah, how how we do that, I don't know, that that's really, go ask Broadway Bank for uh for some property to put another lane.
Is there another project like these uh on the books?
You must be reading from my notes or something. So yes, uh this summer, they're gonna be letting uh a couple of them, so twenty seven at Quinlan and twenty seven at Clay Street, right, right here. By our office, and then also sixteen at G Street, uh so sixteen South. And then uh Hill Country Drive, right up there by HEB South, um those are. But by the time you get through through material delays and uh project procurement uh of contracts, we're looking at. Probably January, February, basically a year from now, uh before that even kicks off. So yeah, it takes takes a while, we're seeing a long lead time in materials, uh and they're they're gonna wait till everything's procured and then start the project. The project itself won't take but a month and a half, two months.
We appreciate Text Dot's investment. Just in these first five intersections, that was about a one point five million dollar investment, so. Although it just looks like streetlights, as you mentioned before, that technology that goes behind it, so they can do that real-time monitoring and tweaking. Um it it's it's not cheap to do, so uh we've been staying on top of Text Dot to continue to do these reinvestments, and we appreciate that they've been responding.
Yeah, and if you'll recall, uh on the Transportation Alternatives application. Uh we had the sixteen application that had pedestrian crossings at sixteen and ninety-eight, that's another one in that same timeframe. Um procurement this summer, start kind of January, February, um yes, sir.
This may maybe nitpicking, I've raised it before, but out here at this intersection, at times you had people. With outfits on that said police on the back. And um they were not, they were not always the most diligent individuals. And I think for people in the citizens, that reflects poorly on our police department, and it wasn't our police department. I I don't know what can be done about that, but.
We've we've talked to district about that, because we witnessed the same thing, walking across the Skybridge. Uh gentleman just parked out in in the street and got out of his car to go talk to contractors. You know, we we raise that to to districts, and I I will mention to them to maybe have that labeled, uh something else, uh other than police. And real quick, the the more uh. I I guess looking at mobilizing late this month, uh the five thirty four and twenty seven intersection. Uh that light is gonna get changed out to the Mast Arms.
Which one?
Out by the VA, the twenty seven and five thirty four. That's gonna be just like this signal.
But how soon did you say?
Late mark, so late this month.
This month, oh, okay.
Yeah, they've they've been waiting for materials to arrive.
That was the last of the five.
Yeah, that was in conjunction with all of these. So then, as far as the actual synchronization, uh that's the hardware and uh all all the installation that they have to do for the the cabinets themselves. And just upgrading the existing signals, they're about eighty percent complete in the fifty signals in Kerr County, so not not just in in the city, but Kerr County. And then as far as the remote monitoring, uh through the signals, they're about sixty percent, uh and then those are estimated to be completed uh this May. And I do not have a slide on this one, since we haven't started yet, but uh the CDBG, so item. Get the right number here for you, uh it's towards the end. Item number twenty nine, uh we have a meeting with Grant Works tomorrow, uh to kinda kick this project off, we we got awarded the TDA. The Department of Agriculture grant. Yeah, uh well, this is gonna be the downtown improvement, so this is gonna be the one that's gonna do the water. It's mainly the ramps, the the primary deal is the Earl Garrett and Water intersection. Uh I've also put Text Dot on notice that, hey, we wanna sync our light up with with the sixteen and Water light as well, so.
The sidewalk improvements, that's the, that's the twenty-four one, right?
That's not what you're talking about, you're not talking about the sidewalk improvement.
No, that that's the one that was a Transportation Alternatives funding, uh basically, I have to get some, you know, certification before we can even. You know, go out for procurement on that project, uh our our hope is to bring something to you uh probably April timeframe uh for the design. And we have to, you know, follow all the federal guidelines on that one, and then, you know, design and then construction completion, we're hoping to have by the end of of twenty-three.
But the sidewalks that we were talking about, that's what number twenty-four is listed as, right?
Oh, that's not what I was talking about, I was talking about the bricks downtown, in the downtown corridors.
Yeah, the CBG is the the Community Development uh Block Room, so that's the downtown. Uh like I said, the primary element of that, or the big money, uh taken on that is the Earl Garrett, the antiquated Earl Garrett and Water Light. Uh and then the uh, you know, handicap ramps at Clay and Water, and then Earl Garrett in in Water as well.
So two different projects.
Right, yes, but the the one you're referring to is uh Hill Country Drive, Coley and Wesley. Yeah, we haven't started that one yet. We got, we got the funding, got the go-ahead, now I just have to sit through a day and a half long class, you know, federal, you know, federal mandate, basically. Lastly, I wanted to touch base on the library, uh we'd mentioned the the ramps. The AC has arrived, and the contractor is working on on getting that installed, uh they've been started for about a week now, so. Uh we'll be geared up, ready for the summer, the the lighting is still delayed, uh we're looking at, you know, late summer, but that's, that's really just coming in and fix, you know. Replacing fixtures, very, very minimal impact. That's all I had.
But the light, the lighting in the park, you know, that's that's the trees and all of that, that's that's begun.
Yeah, that's the, so the Tranquility Island is separate from the lighting upgrades, the lighting upgrades are are going and and replacing all of the. Existing uh fixtures with LED.
Interior to the building.
Uh interior, and then I think there's a handful exterior above the uh above the entry.
Another question, and we've not talked about it here, when is Harper Street? Scheduled for, that that street just.
Yeah, we'd have to look and see where that one falls.
I was just curious, I'd.
Offhand, I'm not even sure what category that would fall in, if it's mill and overlay reconstruction. Any other questions?
It's a great segue to our next topic then.
Are you doing that one too?
No, I'm gonna hand that one over to Stuart.
Alright.
David's gonna present to us today, he's been monitoring this and keeping the city up to speed on where we're at, and I was like, yeah, it's an awesome opportunity to get you in front of council. And uh take a little credit for some of the work that he's been doing, so if you don't mind, David will.
Alright.
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So we'll go over some of the streets pavement management. Uh if you recall, we went over this back in October, I believe, kinda did a recap as the paving season ended, so now we'll. We'll come back to it and see where uh where we stand now as we get ready to start the season here in the next cou- couple of weeks, hopefully. Uh we'll go back on some of the history, um I'll touch on some of these right here, as far as, you know, twenty sixteen, when we first um. Did the first street assessment, sort of gave us that roadmap on, uh key thing, key takeaway was. Uh getting a strategic plan to place a proper maintenance on the right street at the right time. That's the main takeaway, wanna wanna get from that, uh so pretty much assessed three hundred and twenty-one lane miles, which is our our streets network. Uh under that first um assessment, we completed a hundred and twenty-eight lane miles of street maintenance. Uh we went back and got it updated in twenty nineteen, and part of twenty nineteen. We also had some survey results, which indicated uh majority support, ninety-four percent of residents supported. Uh funding for pavement projects, improved streets, so that's always good to get the support from the the community. Um in twenty nineteen, we also did the uh streets reconstruction, the bond um projects. So that consisted of two phases, um and during that second assessment. Uh from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, we did additional eighty-eight lane miles of uh street maintenance. Uh and we'll recap all that in another slide.
Are you, when you, are you combining, when you say street maintenance, are you combining what we're spending in general, obli- on our general fund verse and? And what we issued the COs for, okay, just wanted to be sure.
So twenty twenty, Phase A was completed, six streets uh reconstruction, that's part of the bond. Um and then Phase Two, which is ongoing now, uh twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, um the seven streets. Um hoping to complete that in April, I think we're just have uh McFarland and Barnett, which is ongoing. So uh we're hoping to get those completed here uh next month.
What about our Westminster, is that on something different?
Westminster, it's a, yeah, no- another project, but yeah, we'll we'll definitely cover that one as well.
That's, that Judy, your Lower Street is my Westminster.
Here's a a table showing some of the, our our pavement management activities, uh crack seal, slurry seal. Um those are done by a contractor, but city staff does the preparation. There's some level ups, patchwork, uh tree trimming, sign maintenance, things of that nature, that we'll we'll go in there and get it prepped up. Uh prior to the contractor doing doing some of these activities. Uh patchment overlay, uh that's mainly done by our Streets Division. Um but we have contracted some portions just to improve efficiencies, um so that's the other activity. And the last one is pavement reconstruction, um historically, Streets Division did that. Many years back, but it's very time-consuming, um so we felt it's better to contract that out and get get more miles out of the program. Um so those are your your four typical um activities that that are performed out in the street.
So you'll recall, a couple of years ago, when Council made that decision after that survey came out of, you know, ninety-four percent of citizens. Wanting to utilize uh CO debt funding for street main- or for street reconstruction activities. We made a strategic pivot at that point, and we uh really utilized those bond dollars. Uh to be able to uh push that towards private contractors, doing that reconstruction work, that major street reconstruction. So we could shift the time of our street uh personnel, internal personnel, towards mill and overlay. Uh and really knock out a lot of mill and overlay work, and be able to maximize both of those uh different crews in different ways.
So here in in this slide, you'll see a historical funding uh for streets maintenance. Uh keep in mind, this is only for the operating budget, which is adopted annually by Council. Um so as you can see, the, you know, since twenty sixteen, we've increased funding for it. Um as demand increases as well, to keep up with the streets maintenance and make sure that we have good um good PCI scores. So you'll see the cumulative amount, which has been approved since twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-two. Uh this year's budget for streets maintenance is a little over uh two million, so that's what we where we stand this year.
What is our PCI score right now?
So so we did that assessment back in the the twenty sixteen timeframe, we don't do a reassessment every year. We'll probably be coming up on that in one of the next fiscal years, we're probably gonna budget for it for next year, and they'll go and they'll rerun all of the streets. And do that assessment again, and so then we'll know what that PCI is.
So we have some uh a a model that shows us how much funding is required to keep up with the assessment, so that's what we've been doing.
Correctly, wasn't it below what it was supposed to be back in twenty sixteen?
Yeah, we were in. Yeah, we were trying to uh edge up towards the seventies.
Interesting to see what the new score is gonna be.
I'd say between seventy and seventy-three right now.
We wanna be, what, seventy, seventy-five percent, yeah.
That's our goal.
You will call a big part of that were those major streets that were needing full-blown reconstruction, and so. we're hopeful that, uh, when we, now that we've completed a lot of that street reconstruction work, that when we get that reassessment, uh, it'll be indicated in the PCIs.
Can you remind me where those phases are outlined? Is it, was it part of the report, was it an appendix, or is it a separate thing that we have?
The phase, uh.
So we have like phase A, phase B that we're doing, how, where are those outlined?
That was with the certificates of all.
Right, those are, those are separate. But those streets are on that FUGR list that call for reconstruction, but we huddled up, uh, and prioritized what streets needed to be on, on those, uh, on that bond project, and that's how we came up with phase A and B.
Okay, okay.
We do have a presentation from, uh, winter probably of last year that outlines those with some maps, we'd be happy to forward that to you.
Please, thank you.
And so here's, uh, sort of some, some pictures of what's happened, um, recently. Uh, you'll see on Pascal, we've added the, uh, the bike lane, widened the road, added some, uh, speed display signs. Bottom left, you're, you're seeing, uh, Guadalupe Street, the reconstruction, and Cottage Street. Uh, keep in mind, those two are a separate, uh, funding mechanism. Uh, and then the one on the right, we, we've had some, uh, intersections where we've upgraded the, uh, stop signs and, uh, different types of signs that we were adding on with, with some new technology. So some strategies we're looking to, uh, implement is, uh, this is done annually, we, we verify that, the street conditions. So we'll get together and look at all the streets that are called for this year, and we'll evaluate that, we'll bounce them around different divisions to find out, um, have we had any utility cuts, um, is the street really calling for a mill and overlay, or is it really a slurry seal? Or if there's a project going on next year that's gonna call for utilities, we don't wanna put money on that street. And so we'll, we'll assess that every year to make sure that we're, we're, we're on point with, with what's required.
I have a request for, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
The Guadalupe Street reconstruction, is there a way to put, if you look above that, at the Pascal Street sign and how it monitors your speed?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way to put that on Guadalupe Street? And the reason I ask is because I've got video of drag race, drag races that are going on on that street, and I would hate to see all that pretty reconstruction destroyed by all the drag racing that's going on on that street.
Yeah, we can put that on our list, and, uh, our Streets Division has, uh, we'll, we'll budget for more, um, signs and, and things of this nature to help, you know, place them at different areas of town where they're needed.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, other strategies are, um, just identify new pavement techniques, um, improve materials, that's always ongoing. We asked out of our staff as well as, you know, management team to, to evaluate what, what we're doing now and if there's any room for improvements. Um, also combining street segments, uh, to minimize construction costs. Ongoing, you know, evaluating budget, you know, again, repair techniques, street prioritization. A key one here is investing in our staff, equipment, and our work order software. Um, we have great staff, so in order to make this, these projects continue being successful, we gotta have a good staff, so, um, thanks to HR and finance and everybody else involved in helping our employees, um, re- retention plan, those, it, it goes a long way, um, to have a good staff that has plenty of years under their belt, that has been performing this paving stuff is, is impressive, so. Also, uh, streamlining engineering services, um, and bidding processes. And as we mentioned earlier, our update, um, plan is scheduled for twenty-twenty-three, so we'll get everything reassessed and see if it, um, results in a different financial model to help us keep up with, with the new, the new plan, the new assessment.
So we'll be getting, this school year twenty-twenty-three, we'll be getting the updates.
Yes.
The way that we did in nineteen?
Correct.
That same type of, okay.
And we'll reassess what we've done to make sure that, um, if the street was called for mill and overlay and is supposed to increase it to a certain PCI, we'll compare it to the new assessment to make sure that
It really is.
Right, that they're, they're aligned.
Sorry, can you say what you said again?
Well, we did the, the, this first comprehensive was done in twenty-sixteen, is that right? So when I came on council, we did, we did an update where they went out and they did all the PCI and they ran the streets again, and everything was revisited as far as prioritizing and what was gonna be done, and they, so we got the rightability of all the streets again, so like. Twenty-twenty-three is what it looks like it's.
We'll update it, that's the FUGR.
Yeah, they drive around and do all that stuff.
Wanna keep updating that.
So that'll be in this upcoming summer budget request, uh, to redo that effort, uh, at the beginning. Usually we run that in the wintertime, and so we would anticipate, you know, winter of twenty-two and twenty-three timeframe.
So is it a, is it a plan of the city to do that every three to five years?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes.
We felt like the timing was right after we've done this big effort of reconstruction work.
See where, what it actually.
Now reassess and actually see where we stand.
And we wanna know what, where the scores are, how the PCIs, you know, um, improving.
Let's just know how we're doing.
Right.
Sure.
Yep. Um, here's some, uh, completion status, uh, back from twenty-sixteen to present. As you'll see, we've, we've done two hundred and sixteen point four-two, uh, lane miles out of three hundred and twenty-one, so that's about sixty-six percent of, of the roads. But one thing to note is we, we, this includes the twenty-twenty-one slurry seal, uh, list, but that's gonna be done this year. So we're a little bit behind on that, uh, so we'll get that done here, um, for sure that'll get completed this year.
Let me ask you this, and, and, uh, speeding up the bidding process, is that on our side, their side combination, or what?
That's, that's on our side. We, we have a, a consultant that, that puts, uh, designs all the slurry seal, crack seal, whatever needs to be done, and then we'll go out to, to bid for that. And that's one of the, the strategies that we're implementing, is that rather than having to, to design and bid for each activity, we're trying to package that together. Uh, so hopefully that'll, that'll streamline.
Yeah, okay.
The, the movement, get things done a little quicker.
Yeah.
And here's our list of, uh, for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, you'll see your mill and overlay, crack seal, slurry seal. Kinda made a comment to Guillermo as far as the, uh, the program going on in, in the Legion area. I, I spotted three streets that are in that, in that area, uh, that will be, uh, receiving some maintenance, so. This is pretty much a snapshot of what we have scheduled.
Good, this is one that keeps coming up, Westminster's not on there.
Got a whole slide, hang on.
What about Westminster?
That's a reconstruction street.
Yeah, Harper Street's not on there.
These are really all considered maintenance techniques as opposed to full-blown reconstruction, uh, which is the, the Westminster category.
Oh, good, there's Westminster.
There you go. So, um, yeah, so Westminster, it's, it's road, it's not just road reconstruction, um, as we mentioned, it, it's utility improvements, there's, there, there's a lot of things that, that are underneath that, that, uh, that road.
Lot of old things.
It's, uh, there's a lot of things in there, so we're hoping to get that up for bid, uh, in April. So we're at, uh, ninety percent, um, plans, so.
And that's probably gonna take nine months to a year?
Kyle, do you know what that typically would take on that? It's, it's a very intense project, so.
Based on what we're seeing right now, uh, with material delays and stuff, we're estimating it to be closer to a year.
Two? A year. One year, oh.
So the, the other part of that is also Atmos. Uh, like again, just like I, I mentioned earlier on the, the drainage, uh, At- Atmos does have some work to do, there's gonna be relatively quick compared to ours. Uh, but what we're seeing is sewer pipe, uh, water fittings, we're seeing significant delays that could potentially delay that. We want that done before the streets reconstruct, so, uh, the hope is.
Are we doing that ourselves?
No, that, that's all, this, this is all part of one project, the, the, uh, road recon- or road reconstruction aspect of it will be paid by the annual maintenance. If you recall, in the pandemic, uh, we had some money come back, we allocated, uh, what was taken out. Uh, that's really what's gonna cover a majority of Westminster, then Water Sewer Fund will cover the utility improvements.
So we're almost there. And, and we've spoken with, with some of the, uh, the citizens there and kind of explained to them where we stand right now, give them a status update, and they're, they're, uh, they're, they're understanding, um, but we do assure them that we're, we're making progress, so that's a good thing. Other projects, uh, water and clay intersection, looking at making that a three-way stop, uh, intersection, um, as well as Jefferson and Clay, four-way, uh, intersection.
And again, both of those are part of the cuts program, uh, to look at pedestrian, uh, making a pedestrian corridor that's more, uh, walkable and, and friendly for folks to be able to cross that road.
So the water and clay, that's right by where the Heritage Center is?
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct, and that's also tied into, uh, the CDBG grant that was mentioned earlier in the CIP project, so that's all kind of one project together.
Now, Jefferson and Clay, there's been talk of doing a circle there.
That's the next one, the Shiner.
Oh, Shiner, okay, that's right, okay, okay.
And that one's just not funded, it's designed, uh, it's just unfunded at this point.
Okay.
It has significant drainage, uh, elements that are tied in with that.
And some of these intersections, in addition to just, uh, implementing it, you know, stop signs or adding it, there's striping involved. Anything we can do to improve that, that intersection, we'll definitely look at that. Another one is Olympic and Singing Wing, that intersection there, we've, uh, you know, looking at upgrading signs, uh, additional striping and, um, doing the, uh, school driveway, the, the entrance there, um, redesigning, sort of help with the traffic flow. Um, so we, we've got some, uh, some plans on, on that, we'll get that.
From, from a city perspective, just anybody that, that would, do y'all, does the city like the new school start times, stop times? Do you think that's gonna help with that area?
I think they've been thoughtful about, uh, the, the traffic patterns and evaluating those traffic patterns over the course of the year. Um, you know, I think it's, it's always one of those, you've gotta, you've gotta implement it before you can see exactly what the full effects are. But I think they've, they've tried to be very cognizant about how the traffic, uh, patterns are moving right now.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll continue to monitor it, uh, along with them, and, and they, KIC's been a great partner to, uh, in, in the whole effort of Olympic Drive being extended. This is another great example of it, uh, we're really trying to make, uh, pedestrian and, uh, uh, vehicle improvements to that three-way intersection right there at, uh, Singing Wing.
That pedestrian, that pedestrian cross right there, yeah, for sure. That's one of the things y'all are gonna be.
We're working with them on, it's not optimal in regards to the way the driveways operate right now, and so, um, they've been very good partners to be able to work with.
But even that crosswalk right there with the cars and the flow.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky.
It's tricky, it's to, yeah.
So we're hoping those improvements, uh, or those, what we do out there will, will make huge improvements, and we'll make that happen. Uh, another one, Pascal, as we mentioned earlier, you know, widening the, the road, restriping it, uh, making some pedestrian, uh, improvements, uh, sign improvements, um, things of that nature.
Remember, those were coming out of the dual area plan. We took the, in fact, that entire design effort for the restriping of Pascal, uh, we, uh, provided mill and overlay and reconstruction, uh, several years ago, but hadn't really striped that until we got, uh, neighborhood buy-in on, uh, incorporating their feedback, uh, for those pedestrian improvements, and so, uh, that striping did just occur here in the last couple of months.
Yeah, there's several, uh, crosswalks that were, that were improved, restripped, so you'll see that. Lastly is just, you know, we'll evaluate different signs and intersections and make improvements as needed. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're budgeting for, for, um, improvements for, for signs and, and advanced technology, it'll make, make it a lot safer, so. That being said, I think that is it, uh, unless you guys have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we get a copy of this, uh, PowerPoint and also Guillermo's?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would send that to us, please, I would appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, municipal judge, search process.
I don't have a PowerPoint, but I do have something to hand out to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, uh, just some information regarding the appointment of municipal court judges. Right now, we have, um, Patrick McGuire. Um, he was appointed in two thousand and three, and his current term expires of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, but, um, I think we know he might not make it that far, because of another opportunity. And then we have a vacant position, um, both judicial positions are paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for all hours worked, and that was effective one, one of twenty eighteen. Prior to that, it was a hundred dollars per hour. A judge of municipal court, uh, serves a term of two years unless the municipality provides for a longer term. And then if you look on the next page, uh, or the next two pages, rather, um, we do have a municipal court judge job description, uh, that we have drafted for y'all to take a look at, we can change this, if you have any recommendations on changing it, we'll be happy to do that, but, um, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Tatch and Yessenia has all looked at these and looked at it and thought it was pretty good, so, um, if y'all do have any changes, welcome to.
Are there any major changes from the, the job description that we received, we did the evaluation? We got a, something that looks similar to this.
Yeah, no, there's not, not much change. Um, and then on the next page after the job description, this is just an example, or what the docket schedule looks like. Um, on the Wednesdays, they do the administrative docket at nine AM, and then the review docket at one-thirty PM. And then on Mondays, we do, at nine AM, we do pre-tap trials, truancy, jury trials, and bench trials. And then on ten-thirty, on the second Monday, we do a truancy show cause, and then at one-thirty, on the Mondays, we do the juvenile docket, the water violations code enforcement, juvenile docket, and then water violations and code enforcement. And then every fifth week, the, uh, both judges currently, well, previously, did the magistration duties at the jail also. And then the last page is just the compensation from, uh, twenty-fourteen to, um, the current FY twenty-twenty-one. And, um, so this tells you what their regular hours they worked were, what their regular pay was, and then we separated out the magistrate call-out hours and their pay, and then total annual compensation for bo- both positions. At the very bottom, you can see, um, January first of two thousand and nine, we had an IRS audit, and the judges were considered employees at that time and paid out of, out of payroll beginning in January two thousand and nine. Um, previous, prior to that, they were paid out of accounts payable. And there was different rates for, for them at that time, and then in twenty-ten, there was a new agreement that was effective, and they were paid a hundred dollars per hour pers- for presiding duties with a maximum of six hours per week and a hundred dollars per hour for any additional, um, duties performed. And then in twenty-eighteen, um, the council increased the rate to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour.
Can you remind me what the... Never mind, it doesn't apply anymore. Never mind.
Can you say whether or not we've had any applicants?
We have not, because it's not posted.
We haven't, we haven't put this out there yet, we wanted to bring this to council and get your direction on moving forward, uh, with posting this, uh, anticipating that you all would wanna engage in the search process this spring, um, uh, you know, as we do have, you know, vacancy, uh, anticipated with two vacancies at the end of the year.
Right.
We're really looking for feedback from you all on, on the go-forward process.
And has, um, Judge McGuire been able to pull the load so far, not having anybody working with him?
Ms., Ms. Tash?
Yessenia? Sorry, uh, Yessenia can respond to this too, but in my opinion, he has. I think the only downside that I've seen is when we had two judges, they, if one wouldn't be able to do one, one could step in.
Right.
So we didn't have missed courts, uh, appearances, um, and so, uh, Judge McGuire has had just one or so, so he hasn't been able to, but that has not canceled court. Um, we still have court, it's, they just cannot see the judge, but that's the only thing, in my opinion, Yessenia, you can.
I agree, no, I think we can agree with that.
That's the only thing I've seen.
Okay, and if we potentially are more than likely gonna lose him?
Are we gonna want one or two, right?
What's the learning curve and the amount of time needed for training?
Ms. Hayes?
What I would do, and I talked to staff about this today, particularly, um, William, is that I, I would go out for just one. Which is, you know, and you'll get a number of applications, hopefully, and, um, because I think it. And because I think it's, it's more conducive perhaps to one judge serving the entire docket schedule than two because they could really, that, that would be a nice supplement to their income and they could maybe have a little private practice on the side. And I think that would cast, in my opinion, that would cast a wider swath. You, you, you probably get more applicants versus actually, you know, defining it as a two-position court. And I think you're going to have, you know, some people say, well, I can't afford to, you know, drive up from San Antonio or move to Kerrville based on that limited amount of hours.
Hours, yeah.
You provided what you think would, I know whenever I had my orientation and I had a discussion with former Judge Pozloski, he said that whenever he was approached and somebody told him about the case, he then had to recuse himself, do it at conflict. At that point, he would pass it on to the next judge. Would that, how would we play with that scenario if we only have one judge?
Well, and you, do you want to, let, let me just say what I, what I.
Has it happened often?
Yeah, I don't know if it happens all that often, but that would be, that, particularly if the, if the judge lives here and/or more importantly, has a private practice here.
Okay.
We would have to, you know, kind of work through that. We could enter into probably some sort of agreement with the, say, the Bernie Municipal Judge or the Fredericksburg Judge.
So you think the main, your, your, your thought for the main, I'm sorry, I want to hear what you have to say too, but you, but on the one versus two is that it's going to be more attractive and will attract more applicants because they'll.
More hours.
They'll be getting more hours. That's the main advantage to, to going that route if we decide we want to go to one versus two.
Yeah, that, that's my opinion.
Okay, okay.
Oh, no, I was just going to say also, we have the ability to speak to the administrative judge and they can appoint a judge if the current municipal judge has tried to himself. So that should not be a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have any additional?
No, I, exactly what William said, that situation has occurred before and I know before there's been talks with the Ingram Municipal Judge as well, hearing one of the cases, so that, that has happened.
Thank you.
Okay, in terms of process, I, I, I see the value going for one. And after it's posted, we get applicants, we may, so we choose one out of those applicants. We may have the remainder of those applicants, the second judge is a possibility, okay? All right, so when, when will, what do you need from the council to go ahead and post this?
We just really wanted confirmation that you are ready to post and engage in this search process this spring. That's certainly the staff recommendation. We do think that there's a benefit to having some potential overlap if we're successful in having a candidate selected, you know, prior to Judge McGuire leaving. So there, there's a clean handoff, so to speak, right?
We have Judge McGuire probably until November.
Should be through the end of this calendar year is what he's indicated to us.
End of the calendar year, okay.
But again.
I mean, I know that can change, but that's the expectation.
That's, that's our hope.
Yes.
So the time, the timeframe for posting, a month?
Probably four to six weeks. We'd like to put it out there, you know, for a month right now, indicate that a first review may occur within four weeks. And that way it gets folks encouraged to go ahead and get their applications in.
Yeah.
And then, you know, certainly you all are able to leave it open as long as you want to, based off that applicant pool.
And I think we should decide as a council if we want to stay with how, where and how we want to post it. I mean, do we want to keep this, keep this to a local search or are we going to post it to some, to some state or trade organizational websites or, you know?
Like TML or something?
Yeah, what, what is, what do you think, Mr. Hayes?
That's what I would do. I, I would, and I, I think Kim, you know, certainly does this all the time, she posts to the TML Job Bank and then I would post on the, or we could post on the State Bar website.
Okay.
They've got a job bank.
Good, now is, would you separately post it locally, is it through the local bar association?
I'm not sure how viable the local bar association is.
How do we post it locally then for our local attorney?
You put it in the paper, you would put it on our website.
Right.
She does that periodically.
Yes.
All right, let me ask you, counsel, if, if, if what we're seeing here is not a significant change and we're going to continue the compensation as is, are we ready to tell the city to go ahead and post it, TML, Texas Bar Association? You said four to six weeks to respond?
I think we would put it out there for a month and say that we're going to have an initial review within that time, you know, first review in the month of April. And we'll see what kind of applicant pool we have and we certainly can keep it open.
We don't have, if we don't have the applicants we, we, we need.
We can extend it.
We'll keep it on there.
You all right with that, counsel?
I am, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think sooner the better.
Okay.
We'll get it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
And hey, just a word of commendation, I hear good reports on the work that Mr. Tash is doing and the role he gets played there. And our court coordinator, thank you very much.
Did you get a motion for us or anything?
Yeah, this is, we don't need you.
Are we, are we just going to common, common consent?
I think we've got consensus direction, so.
Okay, all right. Okay. Does anybody want an executive session or do you want to go eat something?
We don't have any executive session for you tonight, so.
They didn't even list as an option for us.
That's right, no option there.
All right, okay.
Guys are on break till six.
Yeah, okay, thanks.